Roll call for the city council meeting of Wednesday, April 17th, 2024 at 6:30 PM. Council members Flores, Brzezinski, Nelson, Schaff, Titus, Troop, and Witherspoon.
Please stand for a moment of silence and following will be the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the side of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have approved the minutes, a motion to approve the minutes of Wednesday, April 3rd, 2024, city council meeting, and bills for payment on April 19th and 26th, 2024. Council members Brzezinski, Nelson, Schaff, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon, Flores.
We have no presentations tonight. Is there anyone, if there is anyone here to speak, please, no, hold on, sorry. Is there anyone here to speak on a repository sale? Is there anyone here to speak on a repository sale? Is there anyone here to speak on our repository sale? Alrighty, I hear no one, so we will be moving on to public comment. I would ask that the media please line up on the left side of the room for you, and the right side, please have citizens to be heard line up. When you are speaking, please state your name and the municipality for the record, and you have five minutes.
My name's Freda Tefra and I'm from Erie and I speak for myself when I speak here. I did note that there's a contract with Lindy Paving. I don't know how many of you experienced this, but for those of us who live on the southwest side, we have this notches odor that comes in the air, and it's coming from a discharge from Lindy Paving. I filed a complaint with DEP after National Fuel told me that it wasn't in my house and it wasn't in my neighborhood, that it was coming from Lindy Paving. It's a chronic thing, and I did ask the DEP to condition their permit to not have them allowed to do that, but it's such, I could smell it coming across on West 23rd, west of Pittsburgh, and by the time I got home, I felt sick, and I could smell it in my house, which has happened to me before. So, just to let you know, doing business with Lindy Paving, that they do have, if you check with the DEP, you'll see that they're having some complaints. So I shared with a bunch of people, there's probably another $200 billion nationally in the Safe Streets for All program, and sidewalks is one of the things that can be funded with that. In the active Erie plan, all the missing sidewalks were identified, and in the Transportation Improvement Program for the MPO, which Erie is part of, there was quite a bit of identifying of missing sidewalks. And I know that I have corresponded with Leanne Parmenter when she was in her prior position about one of the easiest things to do as far as the city doing sidewalks would be around their parks. While when Park doesn't have sidewalks, Brave Bender Park doesn't have sidewalks, I don't know about, and there's, I know there's numerous ones on the east side that are missing sidewalks. I just hope that this opportunity to fund sidewalks with federal money is not lost. May 16th, I think, is the next deadline for this program, but I think maybe Ed is, Ed's Parks, right Ed? Your liaison to Parks? Anyway, I shared the information with you and several others. I really wish that Parks did not, was not under Public Works. I spent several hours removing the plastic sheeting around the trees that were planted and moving the mulch, the excess mulch away from the trees. This was with Sarah Peelman's blessing, and I was horrified to see that there were burlap sacks. You don't plant trees that way. You take them off before. I don't think Public Works, under the prior management, knew what they were doing when they planted trees in the parks, and especially like Brave Bender Park, where we'd like to have a sidewalk. Did they actually figure out where the utilities are, where the trees would go, and is there room for a sidewalk given all that? I just think that there needs to be a park department that knows how to manage parks, and Public Works does a lot of great things, but not when it comes to their park management. Waste management, still hasn't cleaned up Raspberry Street, the sidewalks on Raspberry Street. We do business with them, and people we do business with shouldn't have unmaintained sidewalks. And I reported that numerous times. And while I'm mentioning Raspberry Street, there's hardly any of the on-grade crossings in the city of Erie that have accessible sidewalks across them. And people who need accessibility have a right to have accessibility across the railroad tracks, because on the west side of town, that's how you get across. And I see students walking there. And lastly, I don't know what you guys can do about it, but CBS, which accepts Medicare funding for vaccines and other things, medication, they have, the one on West 26th Street that closed the bulk of the retail portion, they currently have no accessible entrance. They have no accessible entrance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Susannah Faulkner, City of Erie. Good to see you all. First of all, I want to commend you all on the resolution on having the meetings over the summer at the community centers. I think that's fantastic. We talked about that at Rules of Council, I believe, last year, so would love to see that codified as much as possible. Any outreach is essential. I know, for example, watching the HUD meeting from yesterday, when essentially there was no attendance at either of them, or very, very low attendance, getting out into the community, meeting folks where they're at, is fantastic. I want to comment on a couple of things around housing, because there's a lot happening. I know there's going to be a really big news conference tomorrow, Mayor, around supportive housing, and so there's a couple of things that I want to bring to council's attention and ensure that there's continued efforts to work on them. Five days ago, there was an article published in the BBC. As we all knew, there was going to be a lot of attention on Erie this election cycle, and the BBC is one of the largest news outlets in the world, so I can imagine that folks are reading this article from all different corners of the world. The article is called Erie, Pennsylvania, A Swing County Biden and Trump Can't Ignore. Now, most of it goes in and talks about politics, but there's also some of it that speaks on this different situation and quality of life of living here in Erie. They talk about how unemployment is relatively low, that's great. Food poverty is a huge issue, absolutely, we see that. But then also, I was really stunned to see in the article, when our city's leader, Mayor, spoke on how homelessness is relatively low. And so I just want to point out, homelessness is not relatively low for Erie, and it is rising. So here are some stats that I have directly from those who work on the home team and do the count, the pit count every year. Our local leader, when it comes to homelessness, talks about how Erie has increased its homeless numbers from 22 to 23, and it's a microcosm of the national state of homelessness with many similarities to the overall state of homelessness nationwide, and to help solve this crisis, we need to understand it in an objective matter with data. So some data points about homelessness. In the last year, there's been a 25% increase in first-time homelessness. This is unprecedented. We have never seen this since we've been counting data on homelessness. And points to a lack of affordable housing, increased rents, and pandemic funds being depleted, like the, you know, prevention from eviction and all of that, as well as inflation. We've seen a 7% increase in veteran homelessness. This is a year where a lot more veterans were permanently housed, more than ever. There's been more and more supportive services, thankfully, for our veterans, but that still is increasing. And then the number that really jumped out to me was a 15% increase in youth homelessness. This is 18 to 24-year-olds who have nowhere to go. So I just, I don't understand what the truth of the matter is, if we're painting a story that homelessness is relatively low in Erie in an international publication, but then we see here, it's increasing by 25%. All of that is to say that tomorrow, there's going to be a new, big news conference about how the city and the county are coming together to do all these great things around having supportive housing, and that's fantastic. We need that. It's going to cost upwards of $35 million, and my understanding is that that has not been applied for yet, but there will be a big news conference about the plans. We certainly need this. We need to permanently house our chronically homeless neighbors, absolutely. We see that at any point in time, there's about 1,100 people who are homeless in Erie at any given time in the year. This is a huge part, like, this is a huge part of our population that we collectively, as leaders, have failed, right? Like, that's the only way to look at it. So as we celebrate this monumental, hopefully groundbreaking, of a supportive housing facility for our chronically homeless, I ask you all to please look at the laws that are on the books and ensure that code enforcement and the law enforcement and everyone else is enforcing them. We had a lot of successes last year around housing. Please ensure that those are being enforced. If we do not properly enforce these laws, homelessness will continue to increase. Things like the vacancy, having the vacant properties listed, that helps to let us know as government what is not being currently housed, or where might people be squatting, or where might be there be a potential affordable housing opportunity. And then also, everything in the Erie Rental Ordinance that President Flores and I worked on goes to preventing homelessness. So if we don't actually implement these laws, they're pointless. They're just on their books. There's, it doesn't do anything. And so please, please, I ask you to advocate to code enforcement, advocate yourselves, and we have to come together to better prevent homelessness. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello.
Chantel Hillier, city resident, representing Booker T. Washington Center tonight. First of all, I would like to thank you and commend you for the opportunity to hold a city council meeting at our organization and other community-based organizations. Me personally, I think it's a fabulous idea, because we need to meet people where they're at, and it's important to not only the community and the residents see our leaders that are making these decisions, but also the youth. And so any way that we can help from an organizational standpoint of getting the word out there, whether it's flyers, we're going to do that, Central City Neighborhood Watch has housed that Booker T. Washington Center, so we'll make sure that we publicize it that way. And then also, I'll have my staff do canvassing, whatever it is, to make sure that we get butts in the seats. But I really appreciate the opportunity for you all to come out and meet people where they're at, especially for those individuals who may not have transportation to get here. We have some seniors. We have a senior program called the Baby Boomers that will make sure that they're present. So I just wanted to thank you for thinking about you all coming into the community and meeting those individuals where they're at. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other citizens who would like to be heard tonight? Do we have any other citizens who would like to be heard tonight? Do we have any other citizens who would like to be heard tonight? I hear none, so we move on.
Ordinances for final passage. Council File Number 16430, Official Ordinance 18-2024, An Ordinance Appropriating the Sum of $17,281 from Unappropriated and Unanticipated Revenue for the Expenditure thereof in the Capital Fund, and will be used to pay for upfitting the new motorcycles. Funds are from the sale of older motorcycles which are being replaced. Sponsored by Councilmember Schaff, seconded by Councilmember Nelson, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16430, and now known as Official File Ordinance 18-2024, be finally passed by City Council. Members Brzezinski, Nelson, Schaff, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon, and Flores. City Council passes Official File Ordinance 18-2024, finally, by yea seven, nay zero. Council File Number 16431, Official Ordinance 19-2024, An Ordinance Appropriating the Sum of $198,630 from Unappropriated and Unanticipated Revenue for the Expenditure thereof in the Risk Fund, and will be used to purchase a refuse truck. Funds are from insurance proceeds from a truck that was damaged in a fire in 2021. Sponsored by Councilmember Schaff, seconded by Councilmember Troop, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16431, and now known as Official File Ordinance 19-2024, be finally passed by City Council. Members Brzezinski, Nelson, Schaff, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon, and Flores. City Council passes Official File Ordinance 19-2024, finally, by yea seven, nay zero. Council File Number 16432, Official Ordinance 20-2024, An Ordinance Appropriating the Sum of $1,751,173 from Unappropriated and Anticipated Revenue to Provide for the Expenditure thereof for the Kauka Boulevard Bridge Replacement Project, Bid Number 1819-24. Sponsored by Mr. Brzezinski, seconded by Mr. Troop, the Council File Bill Number 16432, and now known as Official File Ordinance 20-2024, be finally passed by City Council. Members Brzezinski, Nelson, Schaff, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon, and Flores. City Council passes Official File Ordinance 20-2024, by yea seven, nay zero. There are no ordinances for first reading. There is no old business, so this takes us to new business, Madam President.
Can I have a motion and a second to move the balance of the agenda?
Motion, move the balance.
Thank you. Alrighty, do we have any separations, council members?
Number one.
Can I get some additional background on Lindy Paving in regards to the complaint that the citizen rose for the smells and the fumes? I don't want to allow people to make our citizens sick, so I don't know what we have to do to figure out, are they not following certain regulations? Is there a material that's specifically causing the issue? I don't know. Do I just separate it?
It's a cog bid, one that's done with little council of governments.
Oh, well then, in that case...
Yeah, well, I mean, you have at least an issue presented to you, and that is that bids are awarded, and either you're awarded or you don't, based on whether or not they're a responsible contractor from performance standards. If there's environmental concerns, council can certainly inquire in that with the DEP and the Erie County Health Department, but I don't see that that directly relates to a contract issue.
Okay, so that's additional things outside. Thank you, Ed.
Any other separations? Moving the balance of the agenda, Councilmembers Brzezinski, Nelson, Schaff, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon, and President Flores. Resolution passes, seven to zero. We have number one. Resolution sponsored by Councilmember Nelson, seconded by Councilmember President Flores, resolved by the Council of the City of Erie. Be it resolved by City Council that the summer evening meetings will be moved out into the community to make ourselves more accessible to the public. We will have a meeting at the Booker T. Washington Center on June 19th. July 17th meeting will be at the Martin Luther King Center, and finally, our August 21st meeting will be held at the JFK Center. We hope this makes council more accessible to the valued residents of Erie, and look forward to hearing from you on our city neighborhoods tour. Discussion?
Madam President?
Go for it, Ed.
I separated this. I am not against having us reach out to the people. I have to say that there are seven people on council, and all seven should be talked to about something that's going to be done. This is a great idea to go out to the centers. We could do it on a Tuesday or a Thursday night when we have study sessions. How do you talk to the folks at, I had mentioned St. Joe's Home, a lot of retired folks there, that would like to have a reach out to, or St. Mary's Home, or Bishop Brock School down on the Lower East Side. We have a whole lot of things going on. All I'm saying is, this was half-baked, it was pushed through, which is happening a little bit too often in my estimation right now, and I'm going to vote for it, because anytime we can reach out to the people, it's great. But I think that we may have been a whole lot better off with more input from everybody, so that we could be at this place and this place, instead of circling into one group and area. Understand, it's not racism or anything like that. It's just the idea that there are a lot of other people. You know, we could even go up to the State Street there with, what's his name? The guy that runs it, Jefferson Center. There's hundreds of places. We've gone to the library, as far as that goes. But like I said, it was half-baked, but it is a good idea. So had to have my say, that's all. I will vote for it.
I know I'm definitely open to the suggestion of us possibly doing town halls on the days that we don't have study session, so I'm in favor of us extending this beyond just the community centers. Go ahead, Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, I just want to point out what the process has been for this. We discussed this in Rules of Council back in December, and we talked about what this would look like. It wasn't my idea at that. That was actually when we brought the soon-to-be-sworn-in folks. I think that was an outgoing council member and an incoming council member that got excited about this. And then at caucus last month, a little over a month ago, it was discussed what we could do, and then I'd asked permission for the group, if I could work out a schedule, and we discussed the community centers. I hope that this is so successful that we do this every year, with different groups identified, different neighborhoods, and the community centers have a lot of experience doing stuff like this already, so I think gives us our best shot to have a successful first summer of it. I'm really enthusiastic that I believe we'll have seven votes in favor of it.
Any other discussion from council members?
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Witherspoon?
I agree with Councilman Brzezinski, and of course, without a doubt, without a reasonable doubt, I'll be there. The three centers are my neighborhood. I'm there. Most people think I'm just there in the summertime. Not true. I'm there all the time. I may not be in the center itself, but I'm there. And the question presented to me, I'm with a group, we call ourselves Brothers Linked Together. It's 42 of us. And a few of them asked me, "Spoon, why are we, why are y'all coming down here now? Where were you when we needed you?" The answer I gave them was simple. We coming now. Alright, so have your questions prepared, ask. You may get answers right then and there, and we may have to go back and research and give you the answer. And I also told them, I said, "None of us on council have an answer for everything. We don't know it all. That's why the administration have department hedge. That's where we go." Then, of course, one of them says to me, "Alright, Spoon, we holding you responsible for..." I said, "Yeah, okay, right." But that's the feeling in the community, and let's make it happen, and let's go do our thing. Thank you, Madam President.
You are welcome. I cannot speak for the past, but we are moving forward to do things in a better light, so that's why I'm hopeful for this to be the start of something great. Any other council members?
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to say that Liz Allen and myself had talked about it when we were on council. Thank you.
That's good to know. I've heard that that was the case in the past, so I'm happy that we're moving things forward for you. Go ahead, Tyler.
Anything that we can do that removes barriers, be it around accessibility, be it around you coming to meet people where they are, that's the, we've heard that said a couple of times tonight, I think is really the responsibility of anybody who's in an elected capacity and appointed capacity. So I am excited that we do this. I do hope that this sets a precedent moving forward, and to kind of echo what Councilmember Nelson had said, that I hope this is so successful that this becomes the new practice, especially during the summers, when it's a little bit easier to get out and around.
Definitely, in the summers, because I don't expect anyone wanting to do this during the winter months, when we're, it's hit or miss on how our winter will be. Councilmember Troop, do you have anything to comment?
Council President, I think it's a great idea. We, people come down here all the time and tell us we don't get out enough, right? So it's a chance for us to do that. I mean, we cannot do it.
Right.
Right. So I think as long as we have a rotation in the future, I think it'll be good, but I think that's what, we do have to have a rotation, because I did hear that question myself. I like the idea. I did hear Councilman Nelson say that he was open to a rotation, so I think it's a good, good thing.
I want to add one more thing, because Councilman Troop doesn't want to pat his own back too hard on this, but we were discussing all of these things over the last couple of months, and one of the contributions he brought to the table was to then do volunteer work at these various community centers, and so that's where a lot of the conversation went. So he's been organizing service opportunities for us throughout the summer, so that we would be able to highlight and engage the public in leading up to these council meetings in the summer. So that's been in the process. He's been coordinating that over the last two months, and there's going to be continued outreach to make sure these are successful.
Yep, and I look forward to seeing it happen. I think next Monday is the first one, so everything is a start. It's not going to be an easy, smooth transition, but we're going to figure out the kinks and then work our way through them. If no one else on council has anything else to comment, I think Lori can call for the vote.
Voting on the resolution, members Brzezinski, Nelson, Schaff, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon, Flores. Resolution passes, yea seven, nay zero. That takes us to committee reports.
Alrighty, Councilmember Brzezinski, I'll let you go first, and then we'll work our way down and around.
Well, Ms. President, we did it. Came up with some beautiful weather for that ballgame, didn't we?
Yes, we did.
The nice people there, a victory, which is even better, and I think a promise of things to come. There's a lot of talent on that field, and I think we'll have a lot of fun doing it. There's a Civic Senate Authority meeting tomorrow, which I can't report on today, because I'm, there you go. Other than that, have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Schaff?
Thank you, Madam President. I attended the Blighted Property Review Committee meeting in person. You, if you have money and a mission to redo houses, you have an opportunity by going on the website and looking at places that might be your future home and project, definitely big project. I attended the Planning Commission, and Jackie Spry talked about the 12th Street reimagined, that they are, had the feedback of it, and April 6th, from 10 till noon, I was at Martin Luther King Center. Thank you, James Sherrod, for letting the Martin Luther King Center be a place of welcome for organizations around your neighborhood. for organizations around your neighborhood. The R. West Bay Front has a lot of projects going on and Mr. Kitter did a presentation about how Mr. Tom Hagan is using his own personal money and I, because I love historical homes, absolutely love the presentation of the inside and the outside of the restoration. After that, I went to Transgender Day at Perry Square and Dr. Titus shared with the community that was there with a beautiful poem and it really was very moving and I thank Dr. Titus for sharing that because I am sure that that took a lot. I went to the Sea Wolves opener. I was at the Sea Wolves game, my husband was at the Otters game. Unfortunately, the Otters lost, but it was, it was the best opening night ever. Usually I'm freezing and beg to go home because the weather is so bad. I attended the Democratic Party Dinner, their annual dinner, and I won a very delicious pie. Cindy Purvis is a wonderful baker and I was lucky enough to be the winner. Before that event, I met with Katriana Perry from the BBC and we spent about 40 minutes together in Perry Square and I showed her where I wanted to have the public restroom. And speaking of public restroom, I am committed to this project and I don't stop when I hit roadblocks. And right now, we are at a roadblock because of, I didn't get a response from too many people other than two people by phone and text to say that they would help out, but I have been in contact with the Erie Downtown Partnership and Emily Fetschko and we're working together and Mr. Hagerty from the Hammett UPMC Health Foundation is in contact with me as well. I attended the Mercyhurst Center Hilltop Senior Art Show and I spoke with some citizens there and bought some beautiful prints. And if you live around that area and are a senior citizen, that is the happening place to be. It's at 38th, East 38th and Pennsylvania Avenue. It used to be a church back in the day, but I had a friend that was there and we got into a great conversation about how she plays all these different card games there and it's really been a lifesaver for her after the deaths of her husbands. So then I attended the Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Annual Chapter Dinner at the Saga Club and Liz Miranda, a Senator from Massachusetts, spoke and I got to say hello to her and thank her for her inspiration and I had a connection with her when she was speaking because she talked about just like starting it up grassroots type of thing and, you know, I didn't really have any political background either and so I really connected with her. And she's the state Senator of the Boston, Massachusetts area, yes, Massachusetts. With other council people, Flores and Titus, we were at the hearing for the Economic Development Office and I attended the SUEER meeting and I gave some papers to my colleagues. They have like $62 million worth of projects that they're going to be doing in the upcoming future. Of course, they're not all going to start them at once. They have listed them as priorities, but definitely need a lot of projects done there for their capital improvements. Sunday afternoon, I went to the Warner Theater. We are blessed with the Erie Philharmonic, we really are. Their Broadway show was wonderful. Unfortunately, I don't go a lot, but I did go to this one and it just blew me away. It was great. So I want people to call for one item pickups or whatever. You need to call. I know of certain areas around town that don't call and you're bringing down your neighborhood by not calling. Please call, please call. That's a big thing. And I went to the COG meeting, April 3rd on Wednesday. I am the delegate for the COG and what Ms. Tepper had spoke about was voted on as the Council of Governments. And unfortunately, it brings to mind when you were speaking about the way my grandmother's house was in the Fifth and Ash area, between Hammer Mill, the Coke Plant, the Sewage Treatment Plant. There's always smells in the Lower East Side, which is unfortunate. And now people along the St. Anne's area neighborhood, they're dealing with the Accuride noise, which hopefully will come into not being an issue anymore because that is in the works for being fixed. But, sorry, Ms. Watson. Have a great day, everybody. I know you looked at me.
Councilmember Nelson?
Oh, man.
Go ahead, Councilmember Nelson.
So half those meetings that she listed, I went to as well. So just, you can just guess which ones, I'll save you the time. I was at the R. West Bay Front meeting that Saturday morning. I didn't go to the same one where I met Senator Miranda, but I was able to meet her the night before. A couple of things coming up to congratulate some of the young people in our city. This upcoming weekend is the U.S. Olympic Trials. One of Erie's own, Carter Strachey will be competing to maybe go to the Olympics in Paris. Some, a lot to cheer on for that, for wrestling, Penn State kid.
Nice.
Yeah, and there's actually another regional guy from Sagertown, Spencer Lee, that'll be competing there too, so it should be, should be pretty exciting. I had a planning commission meeting. They designated 15 blighted properties, all of which were vacant. I also had an opportunity this week to tour one of the land bank's blighted properties that's vacant. The house had been vacant for 12 years. Looking at the county records on it now, it is, it was a 3,700 square foot house. It's currently assessed at $115,000, which had it been maintained and invested in, I think we'd be looking at a $400,000 house. It's that beautiful. And I believe it will most likely be torn down in July. So this is one of those things that is, that is significant to how we do business. Frankly, this was the house that inspired our vacancy foreclosure ordinance and it would be, it's important to catch these things upstream before we get to the point of seeing our tax rolls and disinvestment occurring. We have the tools in place and I'm hopeful to see the land bank turn this particular example around, but the planning commission did designate 15 more blighted properties this week, all of which were vacant. So we, we've got a, we've got a lot of battles in front of us and, you know, but I also have a lot of optimism about the tools that we've provided in last year legislatively. And I yield the rest of my time to Ms. Shoff. Would you have anything else? No.
Actually, that person I was talking about, Henry Rockes, but that's okay.
Okay, Councilmember Troup, would you like to go?
Council President, I don't really have a real report today, but I did want to mention that as Councilmember Nelson said, we are going to be currently, like starting to go out and volunteer with youth in the community at the different centers, different things like that. The first time we're going to do that is next Monday, 22nd, at the Booker T. Washington Center. Also spoke to MLK Center. I spoke to a Boy Scout troop that we're going to be trying to hook something up with. And if anyone else is interested in having, if they work with youth directly and they'd like to have us come volunteer, they can get ahold of me. My email address is mtrup@eary.p-a.us, so they can contact me there and we can set something up. Also spoke to the Neighborhood Art House, they're going to do some stuff there too.
Nice.
Alright, thank you, that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Titus?
Thank you. So on 4/9, so April 9th, I attended the Parking Authority Meeting. They have several projects underway across the various parking ramps, lots and spaces throughout the city. They're continuing to update the software and the public interfaces to improve the user experience. I'm hearing the, you know, the complaints and as is the Director. I'll be meeting with the, sitting down with him to go over some of the complaints that we've received and try to work on developing some solutions, so I just wanted to kind of put that out there too, that we hear them. Met with the communications team yesterday, lots of things in motion there and I'm going to go ahead and apologize publicly to Mr. Robert Lee, who wrote me up a really beautiful summary and I walked out of my house with it on the table. So I'm very sorry, but I remember him talking about the Summer Rec Guide that's getting, getting ready to come out, so that will be available. We've got Celebrate Erie that's starting, starting to ramp up. Applications are going to go live there and there are, you know, a lot of other projects that you'll get to hear about tomorrow at the press conference that's happening or also on the social media and the website. And I apologize again, Mr. Lee, I won't do that again. Attended, or the next board meeting for EMTA is on April 22nd, so next week. This is open to the public. You have to register in advance because it's done via Zoom. So you need to email TCroll, so T-C-R-O-L-L at ride-the-e.com and you can get the link to the Zoom meeting. You can find all that on their, on their website though, so you don't have to try to decipher what I just said. On March 26th, I forgot to report out the last meeting, that I did attend the board meeting for the zoo. They're continuing to partner with other community organizations to increase awareness on everything that they offer. They really, and I know I kind of get a little passionate when I'm talking about them, they really truly are a community asset and so I continue to encourage the city and to support them however we can. And we're going to have a meeting next week with the zoo administration, some of their board members and the city administration to kind of talk about some of the projects and the way that the city can support. So I'm looking forward to that. They are open every day from 10 to 5, so if you can get out there and support them, please do. And also on their website, they have a nice little list of everything that you can do to kind of support them. We talked, we, so we, last week, Councilor Nelson and I went out to the municipal league out in Edinburgh. There's a lot of great projects that are happening, but what I wanted to narrow down today was about the Beehive programs that are going on with all the universities. This is a phenomenal resource for anybody who's got an idea and they want to kind of launch it into fruition. Each university or college has a, has a different branch of the Beehive. So we're Penn West, Edinburgh, Mercyhurst, Penn State, Gannon, and Allegheny just joined in and they have a sustainability component, which is going to focus on the green initiative, so that's great there. Kathy did talk, Councilor Shoff talked about R. West Bay Front and some of their projects, but they have the Trash Olympics on Saturday, so if you are able to attend, they're going to do community service and ramp it up in a contest. So 8:30 a.m. for the early riser, so you can still have the rest of your Saturday to you. Just register at rwestbayfront.org. And then lastly, and I'll close it out with this, is this month is Autism Awareness Month. Many community members do struggle in silence with this because of the stigma around the diagnosis of autism. In addition to it's astronomically difficult to get an accurate diagnosis or to find somewhere where you can get someone to take you on without a waitlist, most insurances do not cover it past the age of 14, so it's out of pocket. And we're talking anywhere from $950 to $200, $2,500 to get a diagnosis of this. And so this is creating a lot of barriers for individuals and I just take the time, do some research to understand what neurodivergency is, lean into the lived experience of people who are neurodiverse, because, you know, we have a lot of community members who come in and talk, but this is one of the other reasons why it's so important for us to get out into the community and meet people where they are, because familiarity is very important in a lot of this as well too. So with all of that, I will, I'll stop talking now.
Thank you. Councilmember Witherspoon?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Michael Frayley, Executive Director of the Erie Housing Authority, is retiring. His last day is June 7th. The individual who will be taking his place is Dusty Dennis. She's been with the organization as Deputy Director and they have been grooming her for this day. I've met with both of them on several occasions. She'll do a great job. Also, I'd like to announce that normally, for the last 33 years, Spoon's League began after July 4th because people are on vacation, et cetera. And I wanted to begin it, begin a lot early this year, but the weather did not cooperate. It has stopped a lot of our outdoor activities. So we're moving it back to July 8th. I'll be putting that out on social media. I will give that to the administration and the newspaper and TV. So registration, of course, will continue to be extended. I want to thank Mr. Chantel Hilliard, who has opened the gym for us for next week, but we're going to cancel that. But the gym will be available on rain days and I will be talking to Martin Luther King Center Director, Mr. Sherrod, when we run the organization at Bayview Park. And if it rains, we'll be able to go into his gymnasium. So I want to thank both of those gentlemen for making that offer and the kids are still signing up and we're very happy to accept the PAL as part of the league now. And my understanding, they'll have just about a team in every division, that's four different divisions. And they'll be placed on our jerseys as well. So thank everybody for their help and thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Alright, I'll go with my report. It's a little bit long, but hopefully I'll be quick. Meetings with the mayor and the department heads on Tuesdays are going quick and it's useful to be a part of because you get to know what City Hall is working on and what will be coming down to council on our agenda. I attended the spring dinner with the Democratic Party as well. It's nice gathering and encouragement with our community members who are politically active, so that's nice to see how motivated they are. On April 15th, we went to the 6 p.m. public hearing for the CBDG Fund, where I seen Council Member Kathy Shoff and Tyler Titus as well. We were kind of the only people in the audience besides one speaker, which is kind of discouraging for an evening meeting, but hopefully we can move forward and get additional community involvement with us making an effort to be more visible in community spaces. On April 9th, there was a Sea Wolf opener. It was a beautiful experience in our city, beautiful weather, great crowd. Our guys won, so it's always beautiful to come from a championship and then win the home game, so very inspiring. I would like to say as well, Happy Autism Awareness Month to all, my past and current clients and community members who live with autism and intellectual disabilities. You all make our community better because you are with us and involved in everyday life. I also wanted to give a thanks to Voices for Independence. Maybe we'll have a community effort there because they do great service for individuals with autism and intellectual disabilities and physical disabilities, so it's just nice to be available to all organizations, as other council members have mentioned, so I wanted to include them. I wanted to thank the Streets Department for taking care of a complaint fast and swiftly. Thank you as a whole to the Public Works for their efforts they have been making to fill potholes throughout the spring and going into the summer, as well with large item pickup. Those are two issues that hopefully we can get people to actually use and maybe clean up our city because sometimes, as Kathy has mentioned, large items are left and people just leave them and they don't report them and then it's a problem. just leave them, and they don't report them, and then it's a problem. So that is an issue that I would hope we can get to better at. If you have a pothole that you would like to be addressed, the phone number is eight-one-four And that's just to give a street and general location of the pothole to get it fixed. If you have a large item that you would like to get picked up, because it is spring and summer, and it's a great time to get unwanted items out of your home, garage, attic, yard, you know, numerous areas, eight-one-four eight-seven-zero-one-five-five-zero is the number for that, and you can get three large items collected at one time. I would also like to thank Erin Spinell for her eight months of service with the Clerk's Office and city council members, and we wish her well back in her position with Public Works. I would also like to welcome back Kelsey, who is our legislative aide who came back. So I like to make all of my team members feel appreciated and valued, and, you know, sometimes giving them the shout-out is what they need to feel seen and valid. So that is all I have to report. Does the solicitors have anything they would like to report?
No. All good.
I have no complaint with that.
I'll just talk about three things real quickly, a couple of them you actually already talked about, but, you know, back on Monday, we had the clips of the sun back on the eighth of April, and that was really an incredible event. I think, I saw many of you there, and I think everyone was, was really, really impressed with it. And Governor Josh Shapiro was here, and he spent a couple hours right here in downtown. He ate dinner across the street, and then came back into the park, and he just went around greeting people, and it was amazing. He talked to everybody that wanted to talk to him, and he usually got a picture taken with him. And he wasn't alone, either. He had his wife and his four kids with him as well. And it was really, really, really great to see. And you mentioned the public hearings. We, we had two of them on the, on the fifteenth. One was at ten AM and one at six. We had a lot more people at the ten AM, just so you know. But the six right there, weren't many people there, and that's probably one of the quickest ones we've ever done. And if, you mentioned the press conference tomorrow also, it's, we hope that's going to be in the park. Right now, it looks like the weather's going to be okay, but if, if there's a problem with the weather, we'll be inside. But that, it should be a very interesting, I think there's four, four of us speaking at it, so I, I think it'll, it'll just show a lot of good things for what's going to happen here in Erie going forward, so. Thanks very much. I think we're going to be less than an hour with tonight's.
Alrighty. Meeting adjourned.